All right, I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectment. It is Monday, August 1st, 2022. If you will join me first in the Fledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. The next item, I will do our best to be loud and project so if he sounds like we're screaming at the folks in the room, we will swelter if we turn off the air conditioner clear quickly. So we'll make sure we talk loud enough so that everyone can hear us. So the next item is approval of minutes. In your packet, you have two sets of minutes, a regular meeting on the 18th, and then a special meeting on the 25th. Second?
Second.
Second. I'm looking for it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And again, we have a special meeting on July 25th.
Make a motion to approve the July 25th, 2022 special meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Liza, second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Just one, one comment here. I made, I made a comment about CGF 77 for paper ballots. And I, I think you made the comment that our town clerk reviewed that as prepared to that.
My comment was that I believe, I believe she was prepared for that.
That your comment would make it.
It will be reflected in this minute. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, present to speak. If you would like to speak, we ask that you state your name for the record, limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone, there's nobody on video, but you don't have to be. There anyone online that would like to speak? I'm going to start online tonight. I just switch it up. Going once, going twice. Anyone in the room that would like to speak, yes.
All right, Nicholasello, 49 Earl. Right down, we want to go down here. I want to touch base with the boy that submitted, which had requested for contracts with Mike being a contractor with the town, contracts with John Gisowski, if I'm saying right, with the town, if he has any with the town, contracts with Mike's company that they may have with the town to know what he should be paid to him directly with his business and to have the emails in regards to this project. Spend probably a little over a week. Just wanted to follow up with that. I want to state concerns of people who have boards and may been aware to the board of select, selectmen, aware, I understand some are elected during, during elections to, to the boards, and when they were taken seats to the VOS, may have gone through voting. You want to mention that we have a member on the planning zoning commission that has said, quote, "I am, I am Nativa like my father before me." He landed at Normie with a whole bunch of Nativa brothers in arms 78 years ago. End quote, which I'm guessing is referring to D-Day and such. So that person on the planning is on it. Or let, let you know, many knew the organization as a terrorist group with a bill that said, that was introduced to the US Senate on 7/18/19 to call into the domestic terrorist organization, which still is an active bill on the floor. So interesting that he relates American soldiers to what is maybe a terrorist group. He also have a board of education member claiming to be an activist by no means and by saying she claims to be an activist to do harm. However, when asked, there was no response given as to what she is an activist for. One typically will address the situation that was called out about it. Is this member ashamed of what they are an activist for? This is a person that's the chair of the board of education too. Well, activists, movements, if any, are being pushed into our schools. Are they extreme right, moderate, or extreme left? I think the proper thing for Michelle to do is come out and just state what she is an activist about being a servant for the people's children. Conflict of interest, Mike being a contractor for the town as a zoning agent and sitting on the economic development board. You have a person that is in a position of influence zoning, influence zoning regulations or change such sitting on a board that states, quote, "Support business as they approach the Wellington zoning regulation," end quote. Which I find interesting when you see the SDC change and all of a sudden this warehouse comes down to town. Sounds foolish, I can't believe I'm even mentioning this, but as we know, times are different and communication styles are and have been changing. Facebook, yeah, Facebook is a method of communicating and many representatives in the area that serve us and communities around us often communicate with residents through Facebook. Kevin Eric decided to block people in the town has limited one method of communicating. I personally have experience reaching out through email to our government address to then get no response, no response lately now that I've been speaking up, which other residents have said is a conflict. She doesn't like it. This is just a point I wanted to bring on record about. Living communication with people you serve is not a wise thing to do when you're supposed to be representing everyone equal. I was made aware of some of the spending with ARPA money, which I personally think is embarrassing that bonuses were handed out when you had every day people working with no bonuses, but yet you thought it was wise to give yourself a bonus. I was told this is going to be under investigation with what response? I know it's not back and forth, but maybe at some point, what response do you have to the people you serve giving a bonus out instead of giving those ones items? So that it could have been dedicated under the ARPA guidelines. So the hot topic being, a hot topic going on is the warehouse at hand. However, the attempt to build basically new schools is going on at the same time. I understand state statutes limit how certain boards can have control over others. However, there needs to be a way to make sure each board is able to have people vote on certain things, such as the warehouse project, for an example. I understand that my communications with the state, I understand from my communications with the state that we can't do much about a charter, without a charter put in place in regards to the warehouse situation. I think that town should look into ways of developing a charter. That's not necessarily for more, for more control over the people, but in order to keep these boards and local government in check. I hear elections are the times you can replace the people that are doing things you don't like. However, as we see with Biden, as an example, like the elected officials could do plenty of damage in between elections.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room, present to speak? Thank you. I will make, I'll take out a point and make a comment that the town does not govern, and I do not govern through my personal Facebook, and I do not have to allow access in my personal side to anyone for town business. So let, let that be clear that if somebody wants to reach me here in the town office building, that is one thing. But your unhappiness with my personal life is certainly a personal issue. So I'll let that stand for itself. Okay, correspondence. You have a list of correspondence in your packet, and most of it is regarding conservation. Status update, school building committee will meet next week. We don't, I don't have any significant update from that committee. We are still working on an appraisal of a private site is thus unnamed and environmental, environmental studies of both that site and the whole school site as we still work to determine whether or not we renovate to new or build new. And when I say to do those things, those will go to a referendum before the townspeople. So before we determine which one goes forward, I will tell you that they have the chair of SBC, our owners project man, manager, and superintendent had a meeting with folks from OSCGR, Office of State School Construction Grant. And they did their feedback was that you should bring one project for. So the committee, the committee isn't ready to do that until we have numbers and really see what a renovation versus a new build would do. And I think that's the right thing to do. We have to, we have to have all of that information before we even begin to start with the public forums, which we'd like to see moving forward, but we don't have a lot more information for them. And those numbers are going to be really important. So we're working to determine all that as they look at a site for a new school versus using whole school to renovate. So again, that's Tuesday, I'm sorry, this Wednesday, the 3rd, at 6:30, and it's still a hybrid. It's kind of a hybrid this week. Check and see, but I'm pretty sure it's hybrid, so it's going to be in this room. The truck lease, if you recall, we purchased three trucks 13 months ago. Two of them were received, we are still waiting for the F-350. Our public works director and I went to Button Ford last week to try to get some concrete answers, which is funny because, you know, we kind of knew that he wasn't going to be able to tell us much. While we were there, he did make some phone calls to Ford. They have now told us that our original build date, which was January 22, long gone, is now set for beginning of December of '22. I don't know how long that will stand. If it does, we should expect, we could expect delivery in January. But I'm starting to lose confidence and hope that they don't change. They made some changes to transit vehicles. They have it with these fleet vehicles, but with transit vehicles, they pushed all of the 22 orders to 23 and said, guess what, it's going to cost you more money. We're not there yet, but it is always possible, so I want to keep you up to date. Donna was concerned because we had already signed the leasing agreements when we expected delivery last fall. And she reached out to our lender and they communicated that it should not be a problem and they would share the information that we shared from Button Ford with the bank. So we're still good there, so we're still holding out hope that on or before January of '23, that vehicle will come in. But I'll keep you posted.
Do we have any recourse with that? If it goes on indefinitely, can we pull the contract back?
Sure, it's going to cost us, there's, we were in for over $49,000. A new purchase would not be anywhere close to that amount. So, which is why we have it canceled. We had that very frank discussion. I can tell you probably is not a fan of me after our meeting last week, but you know, we certainly, we made a commitment to them. This is at Ford and it's going on. We know at least one other town has purchased multiple vehicles and the same timeframe still has received theirs. It's very frustrating, but if any of us had tried to purchase a new car, you'd see, you know, they go. Our, my biggest concern, even if we could find a vehicle for that cost, this was everything we needed plus the plow on it. We talked about whether or not we would look at a used car, used car values are through the roof. We probably getting a lot more than we needed in the vehicle, but those are possibilities. So we figured we just wait until such time, I think it's Troy's has some significant repairs, which we wouldn't want to put into. You know, we'll keep holding out hope, but every month that goes by, start to lose faith that we're going to get a vehicle for the same, the same vehicle for the same price.
So how much money did we put down?
We didn't give them any money.
We give any?
We haven't given them any money. Nope, we made a commitment and then.
We signed a contract.
Yes.
Purchase agreement.
Correct.
So there's a penalty if we pull off.
Yeah, so what will really happen is if Ford pulls out, that's, that's who we pull. Like I think we, unless we came up with some amazing deal somewhere else and tried to get out of that contract, I don't know that it would be us. Because we, we are going to get the same vehicle for the same price. So if I were to go purchase it today, we wouldn't get that price. So, you know, we've been thankful at this point. We've spoken to other Ford dealerships to see if the dealership we're using is an afford issue. And the information Troy's getting from those is that it's the same. They've, other dealerships have actually seen them cancel contracts and cancel vehicles. So we haven't gotten that. And again, we were there when he called for it, so I was part of that conversation. So I was, I was thankful they didn't say, well, this is never going to happen. But move the delivery date from no build date to January 22. Not promising, but it's a date. Before that, we had no build except for January 22.
I just wonder if there's a point at which it makes sense to change our plan temporarily. And, you know, especially if they come back and say they're now going to increase.
Yeah, if they come back and say we increased on it, right? So our contract with them was for X amount, and then we definitely have to reevaluate. We have to come up with funds. We certainly don't have the budgeted. And we have borrowed in the lease we did with the three vehicles together. We borrowed that amount of money. So, you know, there, there are a number of different options we could work out and consider. Donna and I started looking at those, whether we find some, depending on what the additional costs is, find some money in the budget, if that's a possibility. If there's still ARPA funds, we could look at ARPA to make up the balance. So keep the amount of money that we did already secure and then make up the difference with that. Our funds from the general fund or the reserve fund, depending on.
I think there might be a point at which, and again, this is hypothetical right now, but there may be a point at which we're going to have to pause the process and just make it a different plan completely. I'm not saying go to Chevy or go to some other dealership. I'm saying take a break from pursuing this process, reallocate that fund to repairing what we can in the truck, see if we can get over the hump with that, and then reengage in this process at a point where we're not in a global car crisis.
Yeah, I hear you. You know, when we got the, the 450, it was green. I think it came in the middle of the winter, just prior to a snowstorm. And at that point, we were told they only paint green twice a year. And boy, don't we wish we had just, you know, we stayed with what we had, right? So it started with silver, we just stayed with silver, just kept the specs exactly the same. But boy, don't we wish we had gone with a green vehicle because we think moving a darker vehicle. But yes, at any point, we can, you know, you know, pull back and reassess what we want to do. I'm not opposed to that. Troy's truck currently has some, Troy, I believe it's done an oil leak. The bed is, got some gaping holes in it. You know, rust is, it's taking over, but it is still functioning and we haven't put a significant amount of money. And we wouldn't put a significant amount of repairs into it until such time as we have the discussion here.
Yeah, well, I feel like that moment might be coming upon us.
In my case.
If there's going to be significant repairs to that, we would want to know that we're not then, a month later, going to be spending $50,000 to replace it. And we are, I mean, as much as we hate thinking about summer coming to an end.
It's coming to an end.
It is, and fall will be upon us and so will the snowy season.
Yes, so we are on top of it. I, the communication between the dealership and us has really been a one-way street, us contacting them. So that I hope will change after a very hearty discussion we had last week. So I will keep you posted, but I don't know if we pull out, I don't know what that looks like with the money we have in escrow. So that will be a whole other conversation to have with Donna. We did get them, she was concerned and they said that's fine, just keep us up to date on the information. All right, so ARPA, ARPA met today. We approved several projects, including the walking track improvements at River Road that will include some significant drainage repairs and lighting around the tracks. That could be used similar to the, the place gate, the basketball court and the volleyball court by folks after typical sundown hours. Also approved funding for a new furnace at Wellington Hill Fire Department, a direct emergency call line at Button Hill, archival storage for the Historical Society at the Tavern, and for Public Works, a storage box for evictions, and a new skid steer. The storage box, I think you both know that by seek statute, when there's an eviction, the town takes possession, the marshal takes possession of the home, they clear out all the contents. Folks have 15 days to make good on what they owe and retrieve their belongings after that 15th day. The town has been storing them, responsible for the cost of storage, and then holds an auction. So we needed an additional place to store them because part of our storage of them is to keep them out of the elements and make sure that they are secure. So in the event that they retrieve, so this will give Troy more space for that to happen.
That was a good idea.
Yeah, so.
To use a shipping container.
Yeah, he has one and he is using it for storage. And what's been happening is he's had to clear all that stuff out in the winter, clear it out, put things in, and in the summer. So he can still use that if he needs additional, but this gives one dedicated container for that. So while we never want to see that happen to anyone, it certainly does happen. And after the moratorium that's put during COVID, they're starting to see it pick up a little bit. So the commission also moved to have the Board of Finance hold the discussion and give the opinion on two projects, one for the town and one for the fire department that included one-time bonuses to employees. So no action was taken on those items until such time as we hear from the Board of Finance. And the next meeting will be Monday, August 28th at 1:30. All right, as far as office, I'm sorry, ARPA projects for the TOB. We had some computer-related, a computer-related project. It is in three parts, an upgrade to the network cabinet downstairs, that's in progress. They're doing it in pieces as we still wait for things that are backordered. The wire, the Wi-Fi upgrade, the wiring was completed a week and a half ago, but the access points right now are scheduled to be here in March of '23. So just to give you some context, the school's in waiting for their access points right here. So, you know, COVID and shutdowns and other places are affecting that. The laptops, excuse me, and monitors are in, and they're being set up. This is a loan from my office. The docking stations were delayed in their due middle of August, but they're starting to be distributed to staff. So I know Jenny was on here. She may, I think she got her today, so she'll be able to now work, do that when she's at camp. She can actually access all of her town documents to make it a little bit easier on the go. So that was positive. I thought the computers would be the thing we were waiting on, but. CIP project was the flooring in the land use department that started last Thursday and Friday. We hope they would be done today. They pulled up the old floor last week and installed the new carpet tiles. And when Troy and I went in today, the floor was pretty unlevel. So they, yeah, not had to say I was unhappy was an understatement. So Troy reached out to the vendor, they came in, and the plan right now is tomorrow, they're going to have to pull up those tiles, do a self-leveler, which will have to sit for at least today, and then redo the main office and the two side offices. The back portion, which is up two steps, was on plywood subfloor, had carpet on it, so that part is also. So the main office will now take a few more days. So disappointing, but if you don't walk on it, it's great, it looks nice. So I can't wait to see it finished. COVID-19 updates, as of 7/28, we are still sitting just over 69% fully vaccinated. It's no change, and we are up 12 cases since our last meeting. So this current variant, although super contagious, not seeing significant illness, which I think is a plus in the right direction, but it's still out there and still asks people to be cognizant. If you're sick, stay home, think beyond ourselves. Public Works.
I have a.
Oh, yeah.
A question. So a couple of weeks ago, might even have been a month or so ago, the selectmen all, all received an email regarding a section of, I believe, state-owned land right by the river, the bottom of Village Hill Road, that a private resident had fenced off and said it was no longer accessible to the public. Do we have, and I'm seeing by both of your faces that maybe it's not ringing about?
I, I, it's a different story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So there is some action going on.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, could we? Coming back to me now, can we revisit that?
Can, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get an update, we'll get an update for that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, maybe put it on the agenda or something, so we ensure that we have a quick check-in conversation about it.
Yes. Okay, so, oh, Troy is on.
Should be able to unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so roadside mowing is still going on around town. We've, Erica touched on this, but we moved the furniture out of the land use office. Two faucets got fixed by a plumber in the town office building in the men's bathroom downstairs. We fixed some patches on Trask Road. We helped today with some bulky waste that was at the school. They cleaned out through the summertime, so we removed that and brought that to the transfer station. We've installed a new fan motor on our backhoe. We've cleaned the shop, we've washed the trucks, we've serviced and maintained a few trucks in the fleet that were due. Tree removal is starting to take place around town. So if you see Linden Tree Service removing dead dying ash trees and oak trees around town, they will be in multiple spots. Crack ceiling is still taking place around town. And on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, chip ceiling will be taking place. The following roads are Hancock Road, Trask Road, Myrtle, Daleville School Road, Marsh Road, Cowles, Parker, and the two center school lots. And that's all I got for you.
So we'll be sending up a public notice tomorrow, letting folks know about the chip ceiling happening. So the plan is to have it done first thing Wednesday before transfer station open, and then it'll get lots of traffic on there. So it'll be a little dusty on the, right to the transfer station. I resist the urge to say dump, I still call, I'm that old. So, thank you Troy. Troy is, they're going to work, right now, the land use office is occupying the downstairs, which is besides the Wi-Fi issues, one more reason we're upstairs. And so we're encouraging people to drive around to get to them. We're going to work tomorrow to see if we can't move some of the bulkier items out of that room and into the back portion of the land use office while they redo the front portion, just so it's a little bit, a little bit friendlier downstairs. So if you wander in and you wander downstairs and you're looking for Chris or Peggy, just say hello, they'll pop up from behind some cabinet of some sort. It's a makeshift office, say it like, so thank you to all the work that Public Works is doing. All right. Old business, so we still have the job description from the Senior Center. We, and I don't know if Jenny's still on here, or she cut off, she's still here. We still haven't received a communication from anyone at Seniors Inc. Jenny, have you heard from them?
I haven't, they've been made aware of the fact that there was in fact a pressing deadline. So I'm sorry to hear that you haven't heard from them.
Yeah, Jenny and I have talked about it a little bit. I would, at this point, the job description was made, it was formulated using multiple towns' job descriptions and our own needs. Jenny and I working on that. I'd recommend that we not hold off any further if we feel that this meets what we believe is the need. And again, Jenny and I really took a hard look at this. But then we include a member of that executive committee, the Seniors Executive Committee, on the hiring process. So I think that's where their inputs would probably be the most valuable. But that we go ahead and, you know, for an agreement, approve this job description. It still needs to be approved by the union and the salary negotiated. And if you recall, we have, we do have the funds already allocated through ARPA for this.
Fair. Yeah, I think at this point, yeah, we're, we've been waiting for, you know, several meetings. This has been on the agenda, so.
And Jenny has had interactions with them. It's not as though they've been absent. So I think if there was something really pressing that Jess was so absent, we would, you know, have heard something of that sort. I feel confident that this, again, a job description is not every task a position is going to do and that we can always come back and make some adjustments if they're made upon between this board and the union. But that I would encourage us to move forward with the process.
We have other duties as assigned, right?
We sure do. So more related tasks required. So I will make a motion to approve the Senior Center Coordinator position as drafted.
Second.
Discussion. And certainly, if, if some communication comes from seniors, we can, you know, take that into account for process. And again, we can always make adjustments and revisions.
I think as.
I think it's.
The generic, we're duties as assigned.
Yes.
Pretty much covers it.
Okay, all right, seeing no, any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, Jenny, I'll get working with the union on this and we will move forward.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. New business, tax refunds. We have two tax refunds before us. I will move to refund Raymond Voorhees a certificate of correction in the amount of $23.23. Second advice, Jeff, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to refund Paul Wykel the certificate of correction in the amount of $73.79.
Second.
Second advice, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see the dates. Twenty-three dollars and thirty-eight, is that what I said? I did not say twenty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. It's twenty-eight dollars. Twenty-three thirty-eight. Okay. Next item, we have two appointments. The first appointment, you have a communication that came from James Marshall. You see both the board and commission's questionnaire he filled out as well as his letter of interest. So I would move to appoint James Marshall as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, effective immediately, expiring December 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you hear anything from the Athletic Journal Commission? Commented?
They did not. And they did, I shared, we shared this with them as well. But they did not, so. Mr. Marshall is in the, do you have any comments? Mr. Marshall is in the room. He's not, you're not required to speak. And if there's anything you'd like to share with us, that you haven't already. We've heard you a couple of times.
Yeah, I guess just thanks for the consideration. An architect's license in Connecticut, Massachusetts. I think my experience with certain relevant commission. I did hear, I am surprised I didn't hear separately from Mr. Marcel, but we also responded. But, but anyway, I know there was some, I believe your application form had Robin's email.
It does.
So I think it's communication.
Well, there's a little bit of, that we changed a little bit of the process. Specifically when Robin moved down to the town clerk's office. So the town clerk is handling those things and then sending them to the selectmen. And mainly so that we know that there is an opening, so that that's where the check and ballot comes in and then sends them onto the commission. I apologize if we don't have Walters, but oftentimes we take no responses. So I thank you for your willingness to serve. And I know you as well had interest in the school building committee and that the current opening was specifically for a staff member. But I think another position were to open up. Certainly. Yeah, I think your skill set would benefit either of those positions. I think that would be great. All right, so without any further discussion by our board, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I will move to appoint Chris Talona as a representative from the Board of Education staff as a regular member of the School Building Committee, effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has been completed. Second, so the superintendent, as he did in the previous representative, reached out to his staff asking for interest. And Mr. Talona, who's a special ed teacher and the president of the Teachers Union, WBA, is, representatives come for saying they'd be interested. So I think would be beneficial for a voice from the staff knowing what the needs of the school are. Any further discussion?
I don't know Mr. Talona. I can't speak personally one way or either for or against him. But I have spoken out in the past that I'm against having teachers assigned on the school building committee. I think I would rather see parents, other towns, members on there. There's plenty of Board of Education representation on the school building committee. So I'm against it in principle. I don't believe we need another teacher on the board. Rather see another towns person or parent or anybody else. That's my comment. I have made this comment before, so it's nothing new.
And I mean, my response is also nothing new. I think, you know, we, we put together a pretty thorough group. There's 11, right, 11 members. I'm actually somebody who has a child in Special Education Services, who receives Special Education Services. I'm very glad to see that there's somebody with that expertise on the committee, especially when we're talking about renovating existing school buildings and the potential for building a new school building. As I know, that's one of our biggest challenges with our current buildings, is that neither of them are very accessible. Here, not very, just accessible. So having somebody, especially with that expertise and the knowledge of the special education needs, I think is so important. As well as, you know, the teachers are invested in the schools and they're invested in our children. And their voice is very important as they are the ones who are going to be in those buildings and teaching our children every single day. So I don't want to undervalue the importance of having their perspectives on the committee. Whether they live in Wellington or not, they're the ones where the classroom's teaching our children. So I think their perspectives are critically important. And as a bonus, I'm really glad that there's somebody with special education expertise that's going to be joining the board. For the commission.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree. I think it's important to have a voice for the staff so that we make sure that what is needed in a school is, we're on the right track of those things. As a parent, I can tell you what I think my child needs, but I'm not responsible for delivering those services. And I think their perspective is very important. I will also say that we looked at many towns, small towns, larger towns, school building committee makeups when we determined what would, what ours would look like, as well as past school building committees. And I couldn't find one that did not have a representative of school staff. So I think it speaks to the expertise they bring to the table that even as a parent, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have. So I think it's a valuable resource. I don't disagree that it's important that we have residents. I would, I see, I would say residents, not just parents. I think that committee is best served by a variety of folks, not just parents who are currently in school.
And I think that's, it's not either or. There's both voices at the table. And I think both voices need to be able.
Any further discussion on the appointments? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chelsea, can you do a roll call, please?
Lisa? Aye. Jen?
No.
Erica?
Aye. Thank Mr. Talona for his willingness to serve. And I will mention that again, the committee that was developed included a representative. And so it is our responsibility to fill that role with a staff representative. Item C, Towneage Property Estates. You should have a communication in your packet from Kathy Demers, the current chair of the Conservation Commission. As you know, we recently acquired the 16 additional acres of the Towneage Estate on Mason Road through a deep grant. And the Conservation Commission is asking that the Board of Selectmen consider giving the management authority to the Towneage property to the Conservation Commission so that it assists in the work that they do. So I would make a motion to authorize the Conservation Commission to act as management authority of the Towneage Estate property on Mason Road.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Why would we consider anybody other than them?
I mean, like. I mean, I suppose if we had a whole department, if we had a parks department, that might be something we'd consider. Right. I mean, if we're a larger town, we'd have a different department. In Wellington, I don't know, we'd also be the three of us. If not, then it's us, so, yeah. Yeah, I don't know that we consider anyone else. So I see this as a. And I have the utmost confidence in the work of the Conservation Commission. And it's shown in the work that they did to receive the grant that we received. And a much larger grant than any of us were expecting. So the work they put into that is tremendous. All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Communicate with Chairman Demers, who I didn't see on here. Item D, awarding the contract for the Forest Stewardship and Wildlife Management Plan. ARPA Project 26. Those funds were specifically earmarked for tenure for stewardship and wildlife management plan for the three town-owned parcels on Mason Road. And the Conservation Commission has recommended a vendor to us. And so I would move to award the Town of Wellington Forest Stewardship and Management Plan in the amount of $2,800 to to Conwood Foresters Inc.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I'm not too familiar with Conwood Foresters Inc. Why are they, are they a forest, are they foresters or just public foresters, or are they actual licensed foresters?
I'm reading them.
We got a recommendation.
Yes. Yeah.
Wellington Conservation Commission. I feel comfortable that they're recommending, but I'm curious.
They are a forest owners cooperative association engaged since 1945 in the stewardship of the forests of wood, water, wildlife recreation. And that, so the answer is, are they licensed foresters? Things, but I don't. The documentation we have here is not.
Does this price include a forest inventory?
Forest. In a digital format?
Yeah. I think that means licensed forest.
Yeah, I mean, at least, but this doesn't say it specifically, so. And I believe Kathy said they have done work for us in the past. tracked by the town, including our soon-to-expire 2012 to 2022 plan for the Royal Norton Preserve and Daniel Towneage Conservation Trust, as well as the current tenure plan of the Ruby. So we've used it in the past. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, item E, public meeting ordinance discussion. Was an item requested by selectman Julik?
Yes. So I've mentioned this a number of times of proposing an ordinance. That reads as follows. I'll just make a motion that we can discuss it for. So I'll make a motion for the following ordinance. All public meetings of town boards, commissions, and committees shall be conducted no earlier than 5:30 p.m. Monday from Friday. Stated simply as that. So that's my motion. Is there a second for purposes of discussion?
I'll second the discussion. Nice discussion. I think there are a couple of concerns I have. I understand the concept and I, accessibility to public meetings is very important. There are two concerns that I have with being that rigid with an ordinance. One being that during, especially during busy times, that might limit our ability to conduct public meeting business. Like if we're thinking about a third of our year, January through, you know, at the point that we finally have an approved budget. We have weekly meetings. Every other board and commission is having weekly meetings. It would, I don't think it would be feasible to fit in all of the meetings that we need to have during that limited timeframe. Because we're not going to be scheduling meetings at 9:00 p.m. Right, to start at 9:00 p.m.
We should be scheduling meetings at 9:00 p.m. at that. We should be doing it.
So if we're saying nothing before 5:30, then really what we have is like three hours a day where we can really, a window of three hours a day.
We can schedule any time after 5:30 until some reasonable time to end. I didn't want to put an end time on it because
Yeah.
I've seen meetings that show 10:30, 11 o'clock, very budget.
Right.
People get, there's a lot of things to work through. But usually by 10:00 or 11:00, people are like, hey, we need to have another meeting because it's getting late. We can't think.
Right.
So I've seen that. So my whole thing was just pushing it at a time after dinner hour where the public could attend.
Yeah. And again, I'm not arguing the point of meetings being more accessible. I think it poses a lot of challenges in terms of the practicality of doing business in a reasonable timeframe. If we're limited to, because we also don't want to have three meetings going on at the same time that are, you know, all of public interest. So if there's three meetings that start at 5:30 or 6:00, 6:30, then we're still not being more, any more accessible because the public will have to choose which meeting they attend. And then the second thing is not everybody works a nine-to-five schedule. So what we're then saying is your, your time is important. We want this to be publicly, this meeting to be publicly accessible if you work from a nine-to-five schedule. If you're second shift or third shift, we're not paying attention to your schedule meetings. We're only paying to the, attention to the nine-to-five. And now I do understand that probably most people are in that nine-to-five. There's still going to be a big chunk of people who, I mean, I think we have some in this room who don't work a typical nine-to-five schedule, who would not then be able to attend any meeting after 5:30. So I think, I think it's a very challenging prospect to, to find a time where we can say this ordinance will accommodate as many, all the people that want to attend a public meeting. I just don't know that there's, that we can do it. That is both efficient and actually does accommodate everybody. So it's, so I think those are the challenges.
So I see a couple of things. The Board of Commission members can actually determine when they're available and to meet them. Meeting has to be available to the public. All of our meetings are available to the public. They're open to the public. The public has access to be in the room. We record the minutes or so. There's anything about our meetings unless it's an executive session that is not accessible to the public. If we say between these hours, no earlier than these hours in these days, we actually leave people out of ever, a section of people of potentially participating in a meeting. So I think we need to recognize we limit ourselves. If we need to have a special, any board needs to have a special meeting, an emergency meeting. And that's when that board and commission can meet outside of their normal hours. You, we have cut off their access to do so. We have not made that possible. I think of, we have a special meeting later this week with a grievance. That involves members of the union and their availability. And you have to make those meetings available to them. That would not be allowed. We, we just, in a way, potentially taken away their ability to participate in a meeting they, they have to have access to. So, so I think that rigid, I think you actually cut off some public access because you, you've decided who and when people can. So I can tell you, all those people have spoken to the opposite. Our CIP meetings were all in the evening, with the exception of a Saturday where we actually went on field trips to see Public Works and see some of the things at the fire departments and Public Works and the schools that they were proposing to get eyes on. That was a little bit easier than in the dark at, you know, seven o'clock at night. So we took a Saturday that would not be allowed in this instance. And again, open public meeting, people could come onsite with us. And people did so in one of those meetings. I have reached out to CCM, although in, unless it's very, it would be very limited research items. They would send out to all 169 towns. So I don't know this will go out to all 169. I have asked them to do a search or some research. I have asked them to do a search or some research to see if there are any towns, whether it's in their charter or by ordinance. That have limited the time for all boards and commissions to meet. So I, I would not be favorable to moving forward until I could seize a little bit more data on that. But I actually think this limits not just access to some public, but it actually. Limits potential work of boards or commissions. There are subcommittees of boards and commissions who will oftentimes, again. No one's meeting at four in the morning. No one's meeting at midnight. They're, they're meeting either during a typical workday or in the evenings. And they are all accessible to the public. So I have real concerns about limiting access. To public meetings to such a defined time. I would not be in favor of such an ordinance. And I would absolutely want input from our town attorney on doing so before we report. And that would be what we would do for any ordinance. Any language of any ordinance we propose, we'd go for our town attorney as well.
I have nothing to say. I disagree, but that's quite all right.
So you don't think if we say you can't meet till five thirty, that we access abilities for anybody else?
I think most of the people, it will, most of the people could attend after five, after five forty. So I'm thinking. At least that's all the feedback I'm getting.
But you, you actually take away the access of the people you have heard from. There, there are people, like, the reality is, we don't hear from every person, right? We hear from a certain, a certain section of people. The only people I, I, I feel, I'm going to lay it all out. I think this is a political issue. And that's the comments I have heard. There, the majority of our meetings are held in a typical evening time. If we propose such an ordinance, we are actually limiting access to public meetings.
We're bringing it, by proposing an ordinance, it's going to town meetings.
Absolutely. But I think that proposal actually limits access to town meetings. And I think that's an important conversation to have.
It sounds like a perfect one to have in a town meeting. I don't want it, why should it be limited to just my thoughts? Or the people.
What time, what time would we have this town meeting? Six thirty?
Whenever we choose.
As long as it's after five thirty, not a front. I mean, there's some towns that have their town meetings on Saturdays. Because they would argue that's the best time to get people together.
When people work retail, work on Saturday.
That's right.
So, so, yeah, I think, I, I, I don't think it's possible to find one, to find time that's going to work for everybody. And I think that is one of the advantages to having schedules that are more flexible. And, I mean, and quite frankly, we cannot do business if we're limited to three hours a day of evening meetings. We can't.
I mean, I didn't want it to be three hours. I just said.
Well, tech, I mean.
We're not realistically starting a meeting at nine o'clock at night, right? That's, you know, unrealistic.
You could, but I don't know why anybody would want to do that. I'm just saying.
So you're okay with nine o'clock at night, but not nine o'clock in the morning?
I mean.
But you're really okay with that because it's after five thirty?
Before five thirty?
But not before five thirty because.
You can. Not before five thirty? So I guess you're good technically from five thirty till midnight. Although I don't know why anybody would want to have a meeting at midnight either, so.
Well, somebody who gets off, who gets off the second trip. Can make a midnight meeting.
Perhaps.
Right? So, so, I mean, I just don't think we can, I don't think we can be independent of ourselves in that way. Because we would never get our budget done. How many times have we, I mean, we try to do everything, you know. In reasonable hours, but like. There's no way that we could do here's worth of business if we limited ourselves to nothing before five thirty.
So I will tell you that this Board of Selectmen has preferred a time. Other three-member boards of selectmen have preferred an earlier daytime business hour time. That's what worked for that Board of Commission. It didn't make it wrong. It was still open to the public. It was still properly worn, properly recorded. I think it's important to note that our meetings, and I mean this not in any flippant way, our meetings are in public. Unless otherwise noted, not public meetings. Meaning that the, the work is done of the committee, the Board of Committee. And so we talk about, I'll take myself out of it, and the three of us, because we are paid. The rest of our boards and commissions are made up of volunteers. And so you never know what that group of volunteers could be available for. And I. I'm confident that the majority of those regular meetings are in the evening time. I can tell you today, ARPA had a discussion about when we would be. And. Planning and zoning doesn't typically hold a meeting. In the middle of the day, they hold it in the evening time. If they had to have a special meeting and the only time all of their members are available, would they plan it during the day? It is possible. We, you actually limit yourself to the ability to hold a special or emergency meeting. And I can think of some of those that have come up. In, in my time where. We needed a new, I think it was a new boiler at fall school, and they had to put together a meeting of the Board of Finance. And it's not easy to put together a meeting of those eight individuals. And, and get everybody in the room. And sometimes it's going to work out that there's an evening that's free. And sometimes it's, you know, a three-thirty or four o'clock. Because that's when everyone could be free outside of their typical normal meeting schedule. And we hinder ourselves the possibility of being able to do business. But my bigger concern is actually limiting, I, I hear the concerns that people don't want things during the day, but we actually limit people's access. To attending a meeting if we make it only a particular time. In, in the evening. And that's probably my bigger, bigger concern is we've told a certain group of people, whether they attended or not or planned to. You now can't come to our meetings because that, you know, you, you work those hours and I'm sorry. You know, too bad for you. Because, you know, someone else felt that everything should be after five thirty and we picked that random time. It just. I think having a broader discussion about being cognizant of what our meetings are and letting each board and commission make that decision. I think would be more meaningful than such a. Limiting ordinance. That's not too sense. So we can vote on this. I did tell you I had asked for some more research. We can, there is a motion on the floor. We can. Table the motion. We can vote on the motion.
When do you think you would get the results of the information, the query from C C M?
Thursday. Thursday is when I asked, excuse me, our C C M rep. Thursday morning and asked her for that research. So I, I know from research that questions that I've been asked on behalf of other towns. Sometimes it's a couple of weeks. We give, we'd like to give other towns the opportunity to research and give the information back. And again, I have little faith that it will be a hundred and sixty-nine town response. Because they very, very infrequently will send a research item to other city towns.
No, in my experience, and they, they find the five or six that are reflected in our general.
Yeah, they'll send out to, you know, ten or twelve in ours, and if we give up half back.
Right.
I'm really COVID was the only time we saw whole state research requests, so.
I, I would be okay if we waited until next meeting to see if any research does come back and surprises.
So I will make a motion to table the motion. Any discussion on tabling the motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Table such a mission. That brings us to item ten, which is present to speak. If you're on the computer, you want to speak, I'm going to have to hold tight. I'm going to start the room this time. Anyone in the room? Present to speak. Speak your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes.
Pickle cell forty-nine, Merle. So AC in Town Hall reports they're trying to go remote. There's AC in here. They could come here. Talking about taking away access from the people, but it's fine with Board of Education, or maybe it was S B C to go remote for their convenience because of the heat. Instead of putting the people first. If you're not advising that board with the same opinion, then I find that very imperative. Hopefully, when we are hiring people, they're hired as a town employee, give preference to those that live here. I understand you don't want. Communicate through your personal page, which is, which to me shows a lack of dedication to communicate with people, especially when government officials. In town will communicate and even other towns have communicated through such media. Other. So can communicate through social media. If you don't respond through email, then how would one have correspondence with you as a selectman of this town? I don't want elected officials to think when I speak out is because I have personal issues with them or even town contractors or employees. It's called holding government official accountable. Like I think it's good to hear, hear you say there's why they have a diverse board. Good to hear you praise Conservation Commission. Again, am I speaking out? Has nothing to do with holding, has to do with holding government official accountable and not personal. Like you just voted on a contract without knowing their current licenses, insurances. And qualifications going by, oh, they didn't work for us and therefore they're completely, is completely irresponsible way to go about business. What if their insurance is not up to date and you just curiously approve money to them without verification for example? That's what I'm talking about when needing to speak out to hold elected officials accountable. Congrats, James, with the selection. Thank you.
Anyone else present to speak in the room? Anyone online, if you would like to speak? Yes, Mr. Pippen. It says you to state your name for the record and limit your comments to two minutes.
Camera is not required. Oh, okay. That's all right. I'll just keep that. My name is Thomas Pippen. I live on forty-six Schofield Road. I would like to first start off by saying that I'm against the five thirty restriction that was just brought up a few minutes ago because I work retail. And that would put me at risk of not being able to fully understand or even be able to speak on my behalf if something were to come up in the town that is. Like with the current warehouse going on. I would also like to ask, I'm not really sure how this works because this is my first time being here. But we do have a dead tree right across from my driveway that has been struck by lightning. I was just wondering if. Somebody could come over and just have it taken down as well as some kind of speed watchers on my street. Because a lot of people do go very fast on my street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pippen, if I can have you either reach out to Public Works or the Selectmen's Office with that specific information will help, we'll take a look at that.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else online present to speak? Only once, going twice. All right, thank you. I will move on to Good and Welfare. One of my items, piggybacks on something Mr. Pippen just mentioned, I met with our current liaison. Lieutenant Struga of Connecticut State Police, and we talked about some issues in town. And specifically speeding and specifically the Schofield Upper Village Hill Road area. He is well aware of that area. And we are working with Public Works to get him the information from our speed sign that is up there. And as much as possible, they're willing to do some additional patrols in that area. So. A timely comment, Mr. Pippen, that was just a meeting that I had end of last week. I will remind everyone that there is. Primary election on Tuesday, August ninth. From six A M to eight P M. So that event is only for registered Democrats or registered Republicans. And that will be here in this room in the Town Office Building, again, six A M to eight P M, Tuesday, August ninth. Mobile Food Share, which is open to anyone, not just Wellington residents, will be here at the Town Office Building this Wednesday, August third, from eleven A M to eleven thirty. A M, please stop by if you have a need there. You need no proof of residency. It's a drive-through model, certainly drive-through, and our volunteers will be happy to, to help you. As always, if you can, support our small businesses and restaurants. The Summer Concert Series is still going on Wednesdays from six thirty to eight thirty at River Road. I want to thank all of our sponsors. Our very successful summer camp is still going on. They are beginning week four. So in the back end of the six-week camp. And that tomorrow Congressman Courtney is visiting the town to discuss some of the items that we purchased with ARPA Fund. And so he will be here in the Town Hall tomorrow morning, and then we will visit a couple of other places, the Fire Department. Public Works and take him to Hall School. And where we have summer camp, it was, it was fully funded by. ARPA Funds this year. So that is tomorrow. Any other Good and Welfare?
Yes, August sixteenth, Planning and Zoning is going to continue their public hearing on the Distribution Center. I know it's a lot of interest in that.
Yes.
That's Tuesday, August sixteenth.
It should be at Hall School?
Still should be at Hall School.
That's, I know that that was their plan. And we, I, I know Mike took the feedback on the ability to hear. So we've actually purchased a system with some more wireless mics. So working on that, certainly we're not set up in, for a lot of technology, but we're working, first making sure everyone here. That, so it should be, still be at Hall School because of the number of folks we don't want to attend. That is our largest venue. All right, seeing no other business before us. I can't see that far away. I will make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-six. Second, the non-debatable matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Have a good night, folks.